All right. Good afternoon. It's 6:15 PM and we do have a quorum. Welcome to the workshop session of the City of Louisville, City Council. Let's see. Don't forget, our microphone's up top. We'll pick up every bit of sound in this room. So first up, we're going to review the consent and regular agenda items. Item A, Councilmember Meredith with the invocation. Item B, pledges to the flags, Councilmember Troyer. C1, proclamation for child abuse prevention month. C2, National Safe Digging Month. C3, lifesaving awards for an incident at Thrive. We then will be jumping into closed session. We do have one of our attorneys here. I'd rather do billable hours on the short side than on the long side of the meeting. Item D1, public hearing. Consider resolution of a resolution of the City Council. No objection to an application for a 4% housing tax credit. Questions on that one?
Do we have an idea of what kind of? I know you mentioned that there's going to be a lot of upgrades. Or is that getting code issues addressed? Or what is this entailed? Do we know what that is?
Can you say the first part? I didn't hear the first part.
I saw something in the write-up about upgrades and things being made to the property. Is that to get code violations taken care of or what?
That would include anything external, internal, that would have been identified by the multifamily.
Do we have an idea? Do we have an idea of what percentage is the upgrades?
I can't. I mean, I know that there's. My understanding is that the violations on the property have been addressed. Like, there's nothing outstanding. But.
The other thing that Ashley had told me earlier was that the. They had wanted to spend a lot of the money on the interior for like an upgrade to all the kind of the finish out in the building, but also staff was like wanting them to make sure they also did upgrade the exterior as well. So it sounds like multifamily, they're not doing it just to comply with multifamily, but that's what they're trying to get at with code. So it's not just the basic code, it's truly upgrading the facility.
Okay. And if they don't get the tax credit, what happens?
I think that this is giving them the cash flow to be able to do those. So I think that they're just probably aren't going to be upgrading them.
But will we also lose the affordable units?
Yeah, so eventually, right? So like this is extending that, the ability to keep those affordable units longer. So really, this is hitting on council's direction to focus on rehab of multifamily. This is also related to extending the life of affordability for units and that type of thing. And also, this is a Denton Housing Authority project, which apparently, this is a thing we didn't know that they, that even existed, but they, sometimes they get projects that come in and they start funding them. This happened to be one of them.
This is the Denton County Housing Authority, right?
Yeah, so like Andy Eads is the executive of it.
I have a list of some of the.
Okay, thank you.
And so they said, some of the interior improvements will be new cabinets, vanity countertops, appliance package tubs, plummies, fixtures, door handles, hardware, lighting, exterior siding, fencing repairs, H-bike replacement, landscaping, lots of stuff.
When was that place built? Do you know?
It sounds like it's probably a place to have an upgrade.
Yeah. Looks like it was built in 1984.
Oh, wow. Yeah. That's not that old.
If the application's approved, that should extend the affordability period for an additional 30 years.
Okay.
When is the? Is it about to run out, the affordability period? How many more years do we have left on that?
I think we have some time. I think it was 2033.
I think it's, I think it says 2033. It's there. Laura's expiring in 2033.
So it is 40 years from the point of this approval? Or is it 40 years from the time when it's out?
If I remember correctly, it will start, it'll start the time period over and it'll extend. It'll be another 30 years from, from whenever they get the 4%, the new 4% deal.
Okay.
Because they can reschedule and we got that.
So we only have eight more years left now on it.
But you're going to get 22 more.
But yes. So that's good.
Yeah.
And the upgrades, I wish some other properties would.
And they're not letting it run out. You know, they're not doing this because it's about to run out of time.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? D2, special use permit for automotive repair. D3, zone change from public use district to planned development townhouse two.
I live over there and I can't wait for that asshole to be.
I was going to say, if you guys wanted, I also brought, they didn't have this as part of the attachment, but kind of an elevation, if you want to be reminded of what it looked like.
Maybe I've been over there any time lately. It's quite the asshole right now and it has been. This would be nice.
That's just conceptual right now. But that's the intent of what it's going to generate.
I do have some additional questions and comments, but I want to talk about it out there.
Okay. All right. Consent agenda. Item four, minutes. Item five, professional services agreement with Burkhoff, Hendricks and Carter for the storage tank repaint project. Six, half associates for design services related to the Summit Avenue Complete Streets Seven, professional service agreement with Fries and Nichols for the 2035 vision plan.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a request that we pull this. I don't like to talk about that specifically.
Okay.
Please.
Sure. Item eight, resolution for acquisition of sanitary sewer easements.
I'm sorry, one more request on seven. Did I understand our Fries and Nichols friends are here? So we blew this up earlier in the agenda. If it's at all possible, let them get out. Thank you.
Did you give me about $50? Oh, that's it?
All right. Any other questions on item eight? All right. And then we do have item nine, fiscal year '25, '26 budget calendar. And then reports. And we do have closed session at the end for economic development. Any other questions about the agenda?
So we have, we have closed session.
Closed session at the beginning and closed session again at the end.
Okay.
All right. With that, we now have our proposed art support grant evaluation criteria changes and update for the current public art work plan projects. Denise Helbing is presenting.
Hi.
Denise.
Thank you for giving me some of your time this evening. We have two pretty chunky bits of information for you. So the first one is some updates to the grant program. I'm going to do an overview of the full program and then I'll bring you to the questions that we're asking for your consideration. The grant program started back in 1996. It originally was not run by the City of Louisville directly, but an outside arts group known then as the Greater Louisville Arts Council. They are now still in existence, but they're called the Greater Louisville Arts Alliance. Back in about 2010, the city assessed the situation and was going to be making the Arts Advisory Board, which is of course the council-appointed board. And their main duty at the time was to take over the grant program. The people on the Arts Council are the ones, you know, using the grant. So anyway, we made a separation there between grantors and grantees. The funding source is and has always been the hot fund. And we go within that 15% state law allows up to 15% of the city's hot funds to be used to support the arts as a means of tourism. Louisville takes the grant program as a big part of that. Also some support for the art center, such as some of our operating expenses, some marketing, things like that. And then also the public art money is all kept within that 15% cap. We have three different grants right now that we operate. The arts project grants are the least used grants. They're a one-time-only grant for special projects or for new groups who might be coming into the area to get them started. We see applications coming pretty infrequently, maybe one every other year or so. Amounts vary. We have the Artist Micro Grant Program, which was launched about seven, six years ago since I've been here. And those are $1,000 grants available to individual artists of any medium. And so we give five out a year and they have been used for theatrical performances, classes, murals, the old mural that was on the back of Alkey's, now State 28, that was paid for entirely by an Artist Micro Grant done by a high school student. We've had a lot of different things. It's been a very fruitful program. And then of course, we have the Art Support Grants, which is the largest program. Currently, the funding is at $125,000. And it is only available to established 501(c)(3) nonprofits doing art. They have to have been producing art already in Louisville for two years before they can apply for one of these grants. We don't see a huge change in the applicant pool for the Art Support Grants. We're going to talk all about support grants now from now on. We had a core group of six or seven for most of this 30 years' time that this grant program has been in existence. Then back in 2018, a new eighth group became eligible after doing events at the Grand for two years. And then in 2025, we had two more new groups apply who were eligible. And in fact, at the training, we had a total of four new groups on the training call. So there are now 10 groups getting grants and there are more eligible groups out there that we could see apply and ask for grants. We know of one intending to apply in 2026, you know, for this upcoming year's session. And again, more could apply. And it isn't likely that any legacy groups would stop applying. So results of the $125,000 that we are investing into local arts groups include, in last year, 26 art performances, 10 art talks, eight workshops, five different exhibitions and two larger community art events. And the groups reported themselves, 15,000 patrons attending these various programs. So it is a pretty good cost per patron, per dollar spent ratio. I think we're getting good results from the groups. And we also participated in the National AEP6 Arts and Economic Prosperity Survey back in 2022. And they considered also our programming at the Grand and they reported 28,000 people participating in arts events then and a total economic impact in Louisville of $844,000. So arts are an important part of our economy and they are an important part of our being and our entertainment, our tourism here. So due to the increased demand that we have on the same grant funding, we wanted to, the board has wanted to do a review and make sure that we are asking current and impactful questions to get the most out of our applications, to really evaluate the where the best way to spend our money. This is also called for each year in our Community Relations and Tourism Business Plan. And so these changes that they've assessed are what we're bringing for you today, Rhett's recommendation and for your consideration. So as far as the questions go, ultimately, these grants are using tourism-based dollars. So we want to use them to encourage more tourism. So we wanted to really focus in on the impact to the community, pushing for innovation in the programming and making the groups think about how are they evaluating the success of their programming and how can they use all those things to then again, encourage more tourism. So there are four new questions that we would like to add to the application, which are, how will your program highlight Louisville as an arts and cultural destination? Please describe what efforts you plan to do for this program to attract and reach new audiences. And they answer these by per-program basis. And they can apply for, tell us about up to eight programs that they plan to do in one year. How will you measure the impact of this program on area tourism? So hotel stays is where we get the funding, but of course, we know that patronizing restaurants, other local businesses and back and forth with the arts groups is important too. So they can tell us about all those different aspects. And then how will you measure the impact of your program on the community? Their evaluation tool that the Arts Board uses has three weighted areas of questions. The first one is community impact and it's always had a weight of 40% of the total value of the score. And the Arts Board would like to increase that to 60% because they feel like the most tourism-based things come out of community impact-based questions. Capability has always been at 20 and they like to keep that at 20% because, again, these are established groups. We know that they have to be established before they can even apply, but we need to still review their quality of bookkeeping and recordkeeping and things like that. And then artistic quality was 40% and they'd like to reduce that to 20 to allow for that increased community impact bang, but also because artistic quality is pretty subjective. So I know what I like, you know what you like. We might not like the same thing. We can assess it in different ways, but maybe not give it a such a weight as 40%. There has always been an evaluation question that says, does the organization have a diverse board? And it never asked the groups to tell us, they told us, it always says ask the groups, where does your board live? You know, how often do they change roles? How often do you have meetings? How often do you reassign positions and everything like that? So there are ways that the board could assess those levels of diversity, but we didn't really understand how, or it wasn't coming to the board as being very conclusive on what kind of impact does that have on the community or their artistic drive or their capability. And so they would like to ask a few new questions to help them better determine the board's capabilities. And so those are, what variety of talents, professional experiences and artistic background does your board possess to effectively manage your organization? Does the board, in addition to the artistic staff, actively seek input from the community to inform their choices in programming? And the board would like to ask for short bios so that they can get to know the boards a little bit better. Something I didn't talk about on the slide was, a few years ago, we added a presentation element to the grant cycle. And I thought it was important because I felt there was a disconnect between the board and the groups. The groups seem to think the board is like this omnipotent decision-making entity and the board, the Arts Board may not know all the groups. They might know the ones that they like, prefer to go to see, but they don't know everybody. So they come together, they can present their ideas, ask questions. It's not a scoreable element, but it helps everyone understand what they're asking for the money to do. The Arts Board would also like to institute a maximum award to any one grant group of $20,000 to better spread out the available funding through all the groups that are applying. In FY '25, we have two groups that have a larger, have larger than $20,000 award and one group at $20,000. So it won't impact everyone, but it will impact some and then others might get a little bit more. So they would like you to, they would like to, they recommend that and would like your approval for that change. And that's all I have on that. Any questions?
Some questions. So of the three or four groups that have gotten more than 20, how much more have they gotten?
Well, it used to be, some got quite a lot more. There were some that were, when the, when the program was a little bit larger before COVID, the program used to be at 172,000 a few years ago, got up to that. So some of the groups were getting nearly 40,000 or at 40,000. So they've been getting less and less and less anyway, just because we have re, like just the landscape changed about everything. So there, you know, there, there's like four that definitely used to get over 30,000. Now they've been getting over 20. So now they would be getting that or less.
Okay. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to like in my mind, understand what kind of impact that's going to have because, you know, some of those organizations may count on that extra money. Like, is that going to be devastating to those organizations to not get that money?
Denise, I do have the figures here. If you'd like me to report them.
So one of, one of the agencies that was over 20,000 received 25,000, so it'd be a $5,000 impact. The other agency that was over 20,000 received 22,500. So.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, okay. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a half.
Not this year. But those groups are getting half of what they used to get nearly.
Yeah. But they've been able to figure out how to absorb that and to still go and.
It hasn't been, it's not such an immediate change.
It needs to be capped somewhere because it leaves.
What kind of impact do they have though? You know, what kind of impact do they have?
They are big groups.
What's the extra money? That's the question.
Well, and yeah, they are big groups and a lot of the groups, I gave, I showed a figure to Claire and Chantay. I mean, we're collecting back about $70,000 of the current grant dollars given out in the form of rentals back at the Grand. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's part of our economy too. And so those are the groups that are usually actually using the Grand are the bigger groups. So.
I have a question. Can we go back to the slide that talks about the cost benefit analysis?
This?
Nope.
Oh, oh, this one. Yes.
That's right there. So when we define local, is that just Louisville or is that local area? What is local?
Local, which, which part of local do you mean? Like this is, these are local, oh, I'm sorry. This is AEP numbers.
Local 10, yes.
So I would assume, but I don't know the exact distance, but we talk about being outside of 50 miles.
Okay.
Being local versus non-local. So non-locals are 50 miles or more. I don't know for a fact that that is the radius that AEP6 used in 2022, but that is what we use when we start talking about it.
I was curious because 50 miles, that's a good number. So people aren't probably eat here, they're going to do other things here. I'd rather just come in, then I can eat at home and go see the show.
Probably not.
And to counter, I had the same thought. If you've got somebody who you've seen at 30,000, they're responsible for, you know, 400,844,000 dollars, that's still win. I don't know if I want to cap them at 20,000 if they're bringing in that much. I think I, I don't know if I want to cap them if they're bringing in a lion's share of the revenue.
We've never, and we have never, the applications are like this year, they don't look back at results really, besides like your feeling as an Arts Board member, like that you know kind of, but yeah, you know, you know. So yeah, they haven't had to show results except by some, by doing their obligated reporting and things. But we never said you had to have this many out-of-town guests. You have to have, we just, we want you to keep trying.
I hear you. And I'm okay with the cap for this year. I'd like to look at this for next year because if we, if we really cripple somebody who's bringing in lion's share of that, of that 844,000, I'd be like, I'd have lost everybody.
Sure.
Is there any way to do this with maybe a waiver? If you want to go over the form, or do something like that? Appeals process is up, sorry.
So like a waiver, you're saying like an accept, so we have a, we have it, but then.
There's another way to get a little bit more money if you do something.
Because you need certain criteria.
You need certain criteria. It's like the IH35 overlay. Those are the rules, but you know, we have, we have some nuances here that we can use.
Well, I think with the caps, you've got seven, you can do up to seven, I mean, the minimum amount of grants you could give is seven, right? Because you do six 20,000 and one 5,000 because the budget is 125, right?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of other very.
Yeah, but that's, that's the smallest amount of grants you could give is seven in a year.
Sure.
So I think that's, I, there's this push-pull, right? Between wanting to see new people come on board, wanting to see organizations that, okay, you've done the same holiday event every year for 25 years. I mean, at what point does the city stop funding that to try to do something new? Or does that become just such a part of the community that it just needs to happen every year?
Right.
And so I think that push-pull, I don't know if I want to get into the minutia of this guy needs an extra 22,5 this year. I think maybe let's see what one year does with the process.
I was going to say, that would be my recommendation is we can come back after a year, try this for a year and then basically report back and see if it was successful or if we had a situation where like, and it really didn't fit in this one regard and maybe we do have to create kind of a skate hatch for certain individuals.
Or maybe we need to look at putting money back towards this now that we're out of COVID for a while. Of course, who knows with the economy here in 12 months.
This might not be the time.
Any other questions or concerns about these next steps? Okay. Thank you. And then we have more pretty pictures, okay? So we have a lot of public art projects pending right now. Some you might know a little bit more about than others. I'm going to go through, we have eight to go through, so I'm trying to take too long. The Tilla McFadden Public Safety Building artwork has been named. It would be called Civitas and it is in the final stages of fabrication. So you see a picture here of the framework which is done. Thankfully, all the steel and lighting elements were ordered before any tariffs were put into place, so we dodged a bullet on that. Very thankful. There has been some extra work involved in checking these very complicated flats, they're called, of the words on the things.
How many languages do we have here?
Five languages. So English, Spanish, Korean, Vietnamese and Chin. The Korean and the Vietnamese have been very challenging to lay in this cut-out situation. So our public art consultant has been invaluable in looking at this with me, but her especially with fine-tooth comb, to also make sure that like a bridging element that will hold the word on doesn't change the Korean character to something else and make it a different word. Spacing and all kinds of things in there. So just wanted to show you a little picture about what we've been losing our, you know, sleep on and crossing our eyes checking these things.
Can we get a list of?
Yes. So that's one thing, yes. So she has put together a really great tool that we'll be able to put on the pieces website to show what words are in it. Are you worried about for accuracy or you want to see it when it's done?
No, I want to see it before. I mean, do we have just words or if there are phrases?
Yeah, they're words and phrases.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Do we have it? I can share the Google Doc with you.
It's fine, we can share it with you guys.
I'm with Councilwoman McKay. It's going to go without saying, but I'm hoping and I'm positive, I just need you to refer me to somebody who's checked every letter.
It's hard for me to pick out the English.
Literally, it has been done and then redone and then redone.
I figured it had been, but I'll see better night knowing if you told me that.
Yes. We, we had a shock of someone seeing it and we found a mistake and so that has made us like dig into it so.
Yeah, if we need a contingency fund to pull one out and put one back in, I'm okay with that.
Okay. We've had, we've had just speakers, two native speakers, not just translators, native speakers.
They've got a double entendre or something. And you're, and that's a good sharp bond right there is that a little, a little accent in the verb on a glyph can change the entire word.
Right. Right. And Caroline has been so, so great to have on board for that. So it's coming, but it won't be done when the building gets open, but it'll be in soon. But it was to check all this, the language for accuracy, yeah. The project at the library is coming along nicely. It is called Luminous and she is making the glass as we speak now. We have the track lighting on, in halfway and on order halfway. And we're going to be putting the track lighting in before the summer busyness at the library begins. And then we will look to be installing this by late August. And so we have our main installation around the pillar at the stairwell. And then she always does a satellite installation and that'll be up on the corner on level Courtyard sculpture, well, the Louisville Grand's courtyard renovation will then lead us into the rotating sculpture exhibition options, the Sculpture Garden. So the project was funded at a certain level and then quotes came in, bids came in to do it and it was far exceeding the available budget. So we have been working together with, with Parks, with Stacy and Randy and their team very closely. And so between rebidding it, some add alts, subtract alts really is what it comes down to.
All you engineer.
Repositioning, repositioning, some plantings, things like that. And then also contributing some of the money that we had, we thought we were going to spend this year and we're going to put it toward the project for next year. We're to our new goal of 821,000 to finish it out and we hope to be doing that soon. So it'll be a six to nine-month project timeline because this project was put together with the Pocket Park down by Sullivan Barbecue and we will do, be doing them together. But when it's done, it's going to be really, really fantastic. Six sculpture locations, they will be on a three sculptures per every two-year rotation schedule. There'll be cantenary lighting, bench work and then all the, the new native plantings that will match the rest of Old Town. We are in. We are in the contract drafting stages of the project that will go in the Centennial Trail. That artist selected, her name is Gigi Miller and she is from Austin. She is a mosaic artist and she does really wonderful whimsical, colorful animals and things. So we are still working with her to finalize what exactly will be this project's final number of works, but it will include some smaller, smaller works on maybe stone boulders. It's not really a bench, but like something raised up because there are going to be smaller animals, maybe, probably. And then some inlays along the trail to add some excitement, maybe marking the 2025 feet marks along the trail since it's Centennial Trail and then also embellishments on the trail. So we are excited to be working with her. She has beautiful work and she will do a community engagement element with, with the project too.
Awesome.
We have Lewis the Lizard, who you will get to meet the soon enough by the end of summer. This is the Upcycled Project partnership with U N T. It was originally going to be a bench and that proved to be very complicated to meet ADA requirements while using recycled materials while working with college students. So the Arts Board has, and they are great and they are very professional. They're working with their very professional professor, but it was a lot of complications. So he is a sculpture in himself. He will be made out of some recycled tools and some workbench elements that we are, have salvaged and also, but he's going to be covered in reflectors from trucks and lights. That will be the color where you're seeing all of his orange and red and yellow things. And so he will be perched on a rock and there will be another bench that is also a recycled piece of things that we have next to him. So there still is a way to sit near Lewis, just not on Lewis. So these students are in class now designing final designs, getting to fabrication. And they will be graduating this spring and staying on through summer to finish this up. So it'll be installed this summer. We have on the books, an outdoor projection art installation scheduled and it is part of the Centennial Celebration too. We've spent a lot of time through the Centennial Year looking back. And so this is our way to look forward at a contemporary technology. We're going to be working with a group called Lightware Labs. They are a number one in the region to do it. And I do have a little video that I wanted to pull up here and show you. This is a Capitol campaign video done for S M U. But you can see what they're capable of mapping on a building of similar architecture to our City Hall. So we're still involved, we're still, you don't have to listen to what he's saying. But we're still working on the details, but it's going to be in the fall and it's going to be centered on City Hall, maybe with some additional flats added for other depth out in the courtyard of City Hall. We're not totaling all the details, but what is going to be coming up here in the next 15 seconds or so is the way that they can incorporate not only this like fun and movement, but actually historic images and you can tell some information too. We'll start here in just a second.
S M U's founding spark was forged over 100 years ago by a group of doers and dreamers.
So this is all projection map perfectly. So we plan to incorporate some imagery like this. We can have a voiceover. It'll probably be several evenings installed to run for several weeks. I think it'll be a really cool ones. We'll play it out and then really cool when we come in.
And a Texas sized ambition to invest in our students.
That's a group. I'd like to know.
And then we have the D C L I D project, which is another one of the, the new 2024, May 2024 Bond projects. And we had three, we had really great finalists for the Centennial Trail call. We did a Texas based artist call and there were three just really compelling proposals. And one of them is perfect for Centennial Trail. And this one is very cool and so perfect. It just wouldn't be perfect for that. This artist is named Pascal Pryor and she is actually local to Dallas. So that's also neat. But she has, works in metal and then very thick glass, perfectly safe to be outside, very thick, like our rail bench glass, like our benches that have glass in them. And she talked so much about how the glass becomes a fourth dimension of, of canvas and the light shines through the glass. So we didn't want to put that on the Centennial Trail because it's going to be so shady from the trees and everything. So we thought she'd be perfect for D C L I D project because it's out in the open, out there at Rock Brook, around Rock Brook. So we are going to be commissioning her for that project. This is allowable in the public art policy to offer a commission to a group similar to Lightware Labs that we feel, you know, meets our needs for the project. We know their work and she did, you know, go through a competitive process by proposing for the Centennial Trail. And this approach to commissioning art is going to save the city thousands of dollars and save the Arts Board and staff hundreds of hours of time too, because we can get moving with her now. We don't have to pay all these finalist fees and the, the cost of run the calls. So we're very excited to be working with her on that. We have a call open right now for the art for the Animal Shelter and Adoption Center expansion. This project will end up being coming similar to how we did art for Thrive. So the art has to be integrated into the walls or otherwise structural elements of the building. And while the main part of the expansion is truly back of house, this would be in the front of house, but it still has to be incorporated into the building. So we're pushing this along. We're running it for 45 days. It'll be open through May 16th and we hope to have an artist selected by the end of summer to contract so that they can start talking with those architects for the animal shelter. These are ideas, inspiration pieces from art at other animal shelters.
Just made the disco dog.
Right, those are all dog tags. And so they kind of shake in the wind.
Those are dog tags?
Yeah. And Melissa had a wonderful idea at their, at the practice. So how about we could like dedicate them to animals and dedicate them to local pets and put in money and it was all my idea. Anyway, we'll see.
And some of ours that have passed.
What else about that? That's, I think it's, so I've been coming along with that. And then we, we owe Glory Park some art and we have a ways of planning to do that as part of the phase two expansion of Glory Park and beautifying that retaining wall that's very, very long, short but long on the north side of the park. And so Mitsu Overstreet was another finalist for the Centennial Trail project and his, his ways of working with the community, he's from El Paso. So Spanish speaking communities was really compelling and we want to work with him on this project. So we plan to offer him a commission for this project. He's done a lot of murals and then embedded works in tile and stone. That's at the El Paso Airport, that top picture, talking to the community, telling stories of the community and it wraps in these circular bits of, of conversation of words and language. So we're really excited about the possibilities. We have hundreds of cutout birds, metal birds from the shade structures. So maybe they can find a new life in the wall treatment or something. We don't know, but they're available to be used. So we're excited to see where this grows, but we do plan on offering that job to Mitsu. So go work with him. Any questions or concerns about these?
I did, I did want to just talk about the purpose of this presentation for a second. So every year, since I've become city manager, I sent you guys kind of the plan for the upcoming year, but I felt it wasn't as impactful as maybe bringing a presentation to you guys. I think that, give me your feedback on that if you'd like to see this kind of yearly. Okay, good. The other, the difficulty with that is I think just, and this is just a, for philosophical thought process for you in the future, is that council in the past has had a desire to really empower the Arts Board to kind of make these decisions. Obviously everything comes to you guys at, at a certain price point that, for approval. So we want to make sure we're still jiving because we don't want to get all the way through and you guys say, we hate this and you don't approve it. But generally I think the, the philosophy of council in the past has been to really show a lot of deference to the Art Board. I imagine that's still the same. You just want to keep a pulse on it.
I, I know that's, that's my intent. I don't want to micromanage, get down into picking colors and words. I would love to have, you know, a little bit of input or at least be that 50,000 foot view that goes, hmm, that's, that's maybe pushing a little further than, or, or that's not pushing far enough. I know my philosophy has always been on the Arts Board to look at it and say, hey, how do we do like a big project, but how do we also have some smaller projects? I kind of like that mix because if we just did like one big project a year, yeah, that would be huge and it would be impactful, but then your board would be, should be sitting around doing nothing. And I think you can have little pops of color and, and culture all throughout without having to have a, a great big thing every time. So I like the mix. That's me personally.
Well, this, this volume of work for the Arts Board has forced them to split into committees to make a lot of decisions.
And that's great.
Because there's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on. Well, and that's part of that's because we have all the capital improvements and we've, we've taken the, the decision to put some of our capital improvements into public art, which I think is awesome.
I, I personally also like just having, presenting this stuff at this venue. One, it makes me excited. I get excited about seeing this stuff. But also I think it's, you know, there's probably a lot more people in the public that are tuning into the council meeting versus the Arts Board meeting. So just getting people to also see this in the community and get excited about what's coming, I think that's, that's worthwhile as well.
So thank you for that. Council, anything else? All right. I don't believe we have anything more on the workshop agenda, so we will go ahead and reconvene into general session here in about four minutes.
Recall this regular session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum first up on tonight's agenda is the invocation by Councilmember
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Thank you.
Councilman Troyer, would you lead us in the pledges?
Please join me in the pledges to the U S and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God,
All right, we've got a couple of proclamations to run through for the evening. So just one moment. All right, first up I have Child Abuse Prevention Month. Got our friends from CASA here. So court appointed, right over here. So court appointed special advocates, if you guys are looking for an opportunity to volunteer, this is a great one. They do incredible work in the county, especially dealing with, with kids that are abuse and neglect. So we, we definitely, unfortunately, we'd love to drive them out of business, but right now we cannot. So we, the, the next best thing is to get involved and, and help these families and these kids. So today's proclamation is whereas there were 577 children affected by abuse and neglect served by CASA of Denton County in 2023, and whereas more than 204 volunteers from Denton County work with the organization annually by giving their time to ensure safety of our community's children, and whereas our youngest residents need and deserve to be surrounded by love and positive relationships while being given guidance and protection, and whereas the City of Louisville commends the work of CASA of Denton County volunteers and staff in advocating for children during this difficult time in their lives. Now therefore I, T J Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council do hereby recognize the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Louisville, Texas, and urge all residents to observe the occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Would you like to say a few words, Jen?
I would love, thank you. Thank you so much. I am Jen Adame. I am the Community Engagement Specialist for CASA. In Louisville alone, we served 99 children last year. So we would, you know, we would just love for you guys to find out more about CASA and, and see how you can help. So thank you, I appreciate it and just keep this in mind this month. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. She's going to swap camera with you. Just a whole, a whole list of them.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, and these are for you and the council, some pinwheels.
Great, some pinwheels. I'll get it to the council.
Yeah, that's, that's a symbol.
That's our symbol. This, yeah, this has got the little blue ribbon.
Yeah, that's what the children are supposed to think about, not the other stuff.
Not the other stuff.
Yes, thank you.
That's right, that's right. Thank you. Well, and quite frankly, what you guys do to help with our police department as well. I mean, because it's, it's being able to take that and move forward. It's, yeah, it's amazing. All right. And do we have anybody from Atmos? There we go, there you are. It should have had a shovel. Okay, no, I can't, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get a gas line with this. Okay, then that's probably a good thing. So let's, let's talk a little bit about National Safe Digging Month. Whereas Atmos Energy is celebrating National Safe Digging Month in April to remind homeowners, contractors and excavators to call 811 before digging any project. And whereas digging without knowing utility locations can cause severe disruptions, injuries and costly damage, as infrastructure projects and development grow, excavation remains the leading cause of outside natural gas leaks. And whereas the call 811 service is free, safe and required by law, a call to 811 helps prevent accidents and protect essential services by notifying utilities to mark the approximate location of underground lines with paint or flags. And whereas homeowners should submit an 811 request early, verify marked lines, adjust project sites if needed and ensure contractors have called 811. Now therefore I, T J Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as National Safe Digging Month in Louisville, Texas, and urge all residents to observe the occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Lee, thank you for that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you want to have a few words?
Sure. I know you probably don't think about 811, calling 811, but anytime you're going to do anything in your yard, your irrigation system, planting a tree, obviously building a pool, you do need to call 811. It is required by law and we just ask for about 48 hours in advance to get the team out here to do that. So thank you guys.
They do a great job. They get paint and flags everywhere. So awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And the last item on my page, ah, this, let's see here. You know, we'll have the whole crew up here. Is everybody, I, I got, I got everybody. I got Stephen, Ryan, Levy, Catherine, Sophia, Andre, Aaron, James.
These two are not here.
Okay. I'll take it personal. So when you work with the public.
One second, Mr. Degette, the members here.
Mr. Degette, would, would you mind? We'd love to have you here, sir. Glad you're here. What, what I think a lot of folks don't realize is that when you work with the public, sometimes things don't go exactly as planned. And we have an amazing staff who jumps in and gets things done. And you may not realize or may not even think about it, but sometimes that means they have to be trained and capable to save a life. And so in February of 2025, Thrive members Andre Grayden, James Trigg, and Aaron Legrone and team members from Louisville Parks and Recreation Department, including Stephen Hines, Ryan Richardson, Levy Garcia, Catherine Die and Sophia Berg, I'm going to get that one wrong, Burgsley, thank you, demonstrated an extraordinary response during a critical incident at Thrive. When a patron collapsed on the basketball court at Thrive, Andre, James and Aaron sprang into action without hesitation. They immediately initiated lifesaving measures and alerted our emergency personnel. Recognizing the urgency, they quickly notified the Parks and Recreation Staff at Thrive who took over. The Thrive team performed CPR and administered the AED until EMS arrived, ensuring the patron received the best possible care. Their swift response and teamwork were instrumental in achieving a positive outcome. Their swift response and unwavering commitment to public safety reflect the highest standards of service and integrity. And thanks to their quick thinking and preparedness, a life was saved, reinforcing the importance of training and teamwork in emergency situations. I, T J Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, and on behalf of the City Council, extend a huge thank you and commend Andre, James, Aaron, Stephen, Ryan, Levy, I'm going to get that one wrong, Catherine and Sophia for their heroic efforts. one wrong, Catherine, and Sophia for their heroic efforts and dedication in making Lewisville a safer place for all. Folks, that's what community is all about. We look out for each other. We take care of each other, and I'm so thankful for all of the folks who are here today and who couldn't make it for being able to step up and fill the gap. It's awesome. Let's give them a hand.
Thank you for allowing me to speak for a minute. First of all, I'd like to thank God for putting me in the right place at the right time. I like to play golf, and I could have been out on the golf course and collapsed and my wife be a widow. I got to watch the video of the people who helped me, and what stood out was how quickly everybody went into action. Due to the heroic efforts of Andre and the staff, Ryan, and everybody in their training, they immediately started working on me, and I got the help I needed right away. Because of these heroic efforts, I was able to hug my grandchildren this weekend. Got to walk around the lake. And I got to celebrate my wife's birthday. So I'm very grateful for everybody involved. Thank you so much. I'm a pretty positive person. I have a saying, isn't it great to be alive and be in America? And every time I need another uplift, that's what I go to. Isn't it great to be alive and be in America? I'm gonna have to amend that now. And now it's, isn't it great to be alive, thanks to the Thrive?
So we're gonna have you guys file on out, but Andre, we've got some recognition, so if you wouldn't mind, sir. James?
Hey, Andre, did we get a picture?
Aaron?
Wait.
Stephen? Ryan? Levy? Catherine?
Yes.
Sophia? Y'all are awesome. And then one photo? Okay. Everybody get in here, pretend you like each other.
I love you, son.
That's right.
Come on, buddy.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. One more hand. All right, next up on the agenda is Item J, closed session. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney legal issues related to the concession agreement as amendment dated as of December 11, 2000 between City of Lewisville and LJH Limited, a Texas Limited Partnership, FKA LJH Corporation. We're gonna go into closed session. Item D1, public hearing. Consideration of resolution of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, of no objection to an application for noncompetitive 4% housing tax credits from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for a proposed mixed-income development by Waters and Stone Creek LP or an affiliate to be located at 328 East Southwest Parkway. Atlanta Housing Foundation is requesting a resolution of no objection of their application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for noncompetitive 4% housing tax credits. These tax credits provide the financial mechanism that would allow for substantial renovations at the Stone Creek Apartments. The resolution only provides the city support of their tax credit application. It's recommended that the City Council approve the resolution of no objection as set forth in the caption above. Public hearing is now open. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item.
I start?
Oh, that's for the public comment, ma'am?
Public comment?
Yeah, no, this is a public hearing for this particular item.
Okay. Thanks.
Counsel, if there are no questions or comments to be added to this one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the resolution. There we go.
Move to close the public, I mean, I'm sorry. Move to approve.
Remove the resolution of no objection?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D1. Item D2, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for automotive repair minor and automobile sales at leasing on an approximately 0.68 acre lot legally described as Lot 1 Block A, Hamid Edition, located at 647 East State Highway 121 Business Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by 5HR of Omery Southwest LLC, the property owner, case number 24-08-14-SUP. Just7 is an existing automotive repair and sales establishment located at 647 East State Highway 121 Business. The owner proposes to construct a new office building and make improvements to the site. The business is considered both an automotive repair minor use and an automobile sales and leasing use in the Unified Development Code and requires the approval of a special use permit for both uses based on supplemental use regulations for vehicle and related uses. Planning and zoning commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to 0 on March 18, 2025. It's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Richard Lutke is available for questions, and the public hearing on this item is now open. I do not have any comment cards for this item. Counsel, if there's no questions or further comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for automotive repair minor and auto, sorry, automobile repair minor and automobile sales and leasing on approximately 0.68 acres, legally described as Hamid Edition Lot 1 Block A, located at 647 East State Highway 121 Business in Zone Light Industrial LI District, providing for savings clause repealer, severability penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing D3. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from public use district to planned development townhouse 2, district on 3.211 acres legally described as Lot 3R Block A, Central Elementary Edition, located at 701 South Charles Street, as requested by Benny Jafari, TSMJV LLC, the property owner, case number 23-08-6-PZ. The site was previously owned by Lewisville Independent School District. The proposed development contains 55 townhomes. The overall design is inspired by Belleville Village on South Keely Avenue in Old Town. When this project is not with, while this project is not within the Old Town Design District, is within a 10-minute walk of Old Town. Standards applied within the Old Town Design District, such as reduced parking and screening, are requested with this planned development based on its proximity to Old Town. The development supports the two big moves of diverse and thriving neighborhoods in Old Town from the Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval 6 to 1 on March 4, 2025, and is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Richard Lutke available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. I do have one comment card. They do not wish to speak, but they are in support, and it's Jorge Barrios, who is in support of this change.
Mayor, I have, do we need to close the public hearing before the council comments?
No. If you have questions or comments.
Okay. So I actually am, I'm a little bit on the fence on this one because I support the rezone of this property for the use of townhomes. And I do, I also think that this is a, this is a great improvement for this area. I think townhomes make sense here. My biggest issue is I really feel like there's just a whole lot of units here, and I know that the idea is that this is modeled after the Belleville development, but this is actually quite a bit more dense. The Belleville development is about, I left my notes in there, but I think it's about 12 units an acre. This one is more like 17 units an acre. There's really no, no space on this site plan that's any type of open space, meaningful open space. And there's no guest parking. I'm really, while I love the use, and I also think they're good-looking buildings, I feel like there's just too many crammed into this space and that over time, this is really gonna become an issue with cars being, you know, kind of parked on both sides of the street at all times. I think it is just kind of a nightmare waiting to happen. I would actually rather, I mean, I understand where the developer is and needing a certain number of units to make all the numbers work. I would actually like to kind of go back and see, is there something different that we can work with the developer if we need to amend an ED agreement to get something that is not gonna be something that we regret later, allowing this density to occupy such a small and tight space? That would be, that would be my request on this item.
Other comments, questions?
I love you, Kristin. I respect you. This is literally in my neighborhood, and I'm very excited about it. I don't know that parking is really gonna be that much of an issue because you have Charles Street. That's a wide street. There's parking in front of the townhomes on the other side, which still leaves you if you park on the other, it's still, and it's gonna, we have an enormous amount of cars, and it will wake us up. They use that as a racetrack. I'm looking forward to having it be basically like a road diet right there. And we have the two-car garages. I don't, I love this project, and I'm ready to see it going. I'm ready to see it going.
So can I just ask you, would you, I'm not saying I want to kill the project. I want this to happen. I'm asking if we can go back to the table and try to work a deal where we can get a few less units in here.
But we've been doing that for four years, since 2021.
Sort of. I'm just, I'm just saying that usually for these types of projects, we ask for more than two parking spaces per unit, right? We ask for three?
That is the standard for, the citywide standard for, you know, for Old Town, although this is not in the Old Town Design District, the Old Town Design District does allow, you know, two spaces either covered or uncovered with each residential unit. And this is a couple of blocks from that boundary.
I would be, I understand there's a, that this has been going for a long time, and we want to see it moving. I just don't want to be in such a hurry to get it moving that we, we do something that we're gonna regret later. I'll, that's my thoughts.
Counsel, other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as set forth in the caption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. City Attorney?
An ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 3.211 acres legally described as Lot 3R Block A, Central Elementary Edition, located at 701 South Charles Street, from public use PU district zoning to planned development townhouse 2 residential PD-TH2 district zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for a savings clause repealer, severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes 4-1. 5-1. Thank you, Counsel. Item E, visitors forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have one comment card for visitors forum, Ms. Diane Beck. Ms. Beck, if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Diane Beck, and I live on Follyby Road in Lake Dallas, Texas. And thank you, Mayor. I wasn't familiar with your protocol. My question to address everyone, actually, is where do you want to spend your eternity? Because most people, and I say this, wake up. Lake Dallas, wake up. Lewisville, Texas, wake up. All the nation. The nation right now, mostly people are spiritually asleep, and I see it. Most are not bad people, actually, even, but they're just spiritually not there. They're not looking for what really happens or matters in this world, and it doesn't matter what happens in the outcome, all that matters is that we go up, that our soul is not lost. And I see most people doing the wrong thing. It's very sad. And I point out, I'm not calling out to judge anyone, I'm calling it out because the behavior is inappropriate, and it's just wrong. And I know right from wrong, unfortunately, most people don't. So what we're living right now is a totalitarianism state, a denial of rights, every citizen, not just me, denial of freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom to carry, and even the privilege of driving by your Lewisville finest has been taken away from me. So privileges and rights are being taken away from average citizens. So my strange husband gave a false report on 5/15/2023 to your Lewisville police officers, Sly and Sergeant Johnson, and they took his word. I tell you not, I kid you not, and it is a lie. He said and reported that I had a brain tumor. Obviously, if I'm standing in front of you and have no symptoms or signs for all these years, I don't have that brain tumor that he gave a tip, false tip to the cops. But the DPS is going on, they're evidence saying that they need a retraction, which your police department will not do. So I have no other avenue but to go out and sue them in small claims. That's my only outcome. I've tried to get lawyers through the years, and there's just no one that has the courage to stand up. Very few have courage. And I tell you, this takes a lot of courage to come before you because I know what most people think, it's wrong. What you got out there on the internet and the media is all wrong. And yes, there is an imposter. I know it sounds preposterous, but in jail, I was seen by other people, and they said they were Diane Beck. said they were Diane Beck. They're not Diane Beck. And the other Diane Beck does not have a hand like this, and a Dr. Botch, Dr. Reel, Botch's a surgeon, because I know that for a fact because they tried to take my prints. And they said, oh, just a short while ago, you were able to get your prints taken. I said, it wasn't me. And that was told to me by Rodney Chase, the unsung hero of this case in 1983, that I had, even back then, I was younger, much younger, because I was born in 1960, but that I had an imposter following my tracks. And I have evidence now here in Texas that it is indeed horrible truth, and it is a horror to live this. It's a nightmare. And I, what I need right now is a miracle because people are just going around and bullying me, and I'm just standing up. I will not back down or tolerate this abuse, and it is abuse. People think this is funny. Oh, yeah, you try it one minute. I tell you, one minute of this abuse, hardly anyone would still be standing, nevertheless talking out, because I will not back down or tolerate this treatment. And this is crazy, what people think, and they're trying to pin it on me, but everything that they're doing is going to come right back at them. That's my faith, and that's my belief, and that's my stand-up for America, freedom, speech. And I will not tolerate this level. It is crazy what people are doing. And of course, your own finest, someone in the department, doctored the camcorder of my evidence to prove my case with Officers Sly and Sergeant Johnson. And they all, they lost a phone call that I made in June to show that indeed, with the sergeant, that my license was not at jeopardy. And this was three weeks later I made that call. But of course, it's lost. But you see, all is not lost because if God is for us, who can be against? I'm up against horrible agenda out to get me. And I know it sounds delusional because I'm an LPC licensed professional counselor, but in this case, I have hardcore facts that prove my case. And I tell you the truth, living this nightmare is not easy. And I know I didn't go through nine minutes, or five minutes, but people try to silence freedom in this country. So, I'm in the spiritual bottom of my life. If you have any look, you can look at the Al Pacino Click and Justice for All, because I need justice for Gunner, who was killed at the Denton Shelter, and my Tanner, who I do believe was killed at the Denton Shelter.
Ms. Beck, that's, that's time.
And if you have, okay, soon. Charles Stanley, one last thing. Charles Stanley said that the thing of value, I know it didn't go for five minutes, this thing of value to him, most value to him was something that-
Thank you. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and being acted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests. For a member of the public to request removal of an item, a speaker, carter, e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the secretary, City Secretary. I do not have any requests from the public. I do have a request that item seven be pulled from the consent agenda by Councilmember Kelly. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item seven.
Move to approve the consent agenda except for item seven.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes. Item seven. Approval of professional services agreement with Fries and Nichols Incorporated and the amount of $537,500 for development of the Lewisville 2035 Vision Plan and authorization for the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement. The Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan was adopted in July 2014 after extensive public involvement and has served as the basis of decision-making over the past 11 years. The consulting firm of Fries and Nichols has been selected to facilitate stakeholder engagement and community input in support of the creation of a community vision plan that includes strategies and recommendations related to housing, land use, and other focus areas identified by the community. Karen Walz, FAI CP, Principal of Strategic Community Solutions LLC, who served as the lead for community engagement for both the original 2025 plan and the 2021 update, will serve as an extension of staff and will provide input and direction for the overall planning process associated with 2035 plan under the, under a separate PSA. Rio Planning, a firm that specializes in Hispanic community outreach and engagement, will serve as a subconsultant to Fries and Nichols and is included in the overall scope of the work. The project cost outlined in the professional services agreement is $537,500. The overall project is estimated to be completed over 18 months. Funding is available in the Lewisville 2035 Implementation Capital Project. It's recommended that the City Council approve the agreement and authorize the city manager or designee to execute the agreement. And with that, I'll open it up for, for comments or questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll get started here. So, I want to frame this discussion real quick. This is an informational exchange, just trying to get some clarity around some of the, some of the pieces of this that are due specifically with our attempt to further engage the Hispanic community. So, anytime I see any kind of carve-out for any group, it could be seniors, it could be apartments, it could be, could be homeowners, I just wanted to make sure that we have a form where we can discuss that and why we're doing that specifically. This isn't meant to be adversarial. This is just meant to gather some information, make sure we have all the information out and to the public. So, I'll start off, I've got about six questions here, and anybody can answer. I think City Manager Powell, I think you've got some answers that, that'd be interesting to hear as well. So, the first question is, we, there's $537,000 assigned for this overall effort. What, what is a dollar amount assigned to, to Rio?
$50,000.
$50,000, thank you. And I realize that Rio's done some work with, with, not San Antonio, who did they just do some work for?
Amarillo.
Amarillo. So, why, why Rio for this particular endeavor?
So, it's an interesting path we got to with Rio. So, we brought in what our staff came to be kind of like the, the top leaders with regard to plans, executing these large, long-range plans. And Rio Planning actually got added in to that group, and so we had a team of city staffers that met as part of the selection committee in that we were primarily focused on engagement. We knew that everyone in the room could do the big, the, the big companies, Fries and Nichols, Half, Kimley Horn, we knew that they could put together a plan. Obviously, Fries and Nichols had been our prior contractor or prior consultant for the 2025 plan. But Rio also got into the room because they, they were an up-and-coming firm that people were talking about. As soon as we met Rio and Jennifer Rangel, we knew she was very incredibly smart. She had a kind of niche that she was building for her, for her nonprofit, but we also knew that she was not capable of probably being the primary at this point, mainly because she doesn't have the staff levels that a Fries and Nichols has. But what we did notice in that engagement with her was that there was a, an expertise that she had in reaching and getting engagement from the Latina community that we thought would be instrumental to furthering our goals of doubling the engagement that we got from 2025. And then also the goals that council had set forth for us related in the 2025 plan about involving the entire diverse community in implementation and also the most recent 2025 prioritization, which is an emphasis on reaching currently under-engaged populations such as apartment residents and the Latino and Chin populations. We have made good strides with regard to the Chin population. We've got a multifamily engagement plan that we've done. All the efforts we've really tried to do on the Latina community has not been as effective unless we're really going door-to-door trying to get engagement for our plans. And so, we knew we needed someone, more boots on the ground that were going to help us with that.
And I want to make sure I'm pronouncing it correctly. Is it Rio or Rio?
Rio.
Rio, thank you for that. And they've won some awards in a specific space, I understand?
Yeah, it's just recently in the National Planning Conference, they were just, they were listed as one of, as one of the top planning firms in the United States for Hispanic engagement.
Thank you. And I think we hit upon this already, but our, our goal as a city is to make sure everybody engages regardless of what that demographic is. And we, we've looked at, you mentioned Chin populations, but we feel like the Hispanic population is the next big segment to do, or is it just one we need help with and we're engaging other segments as well?
You know, it's interesting. So, I, I was looking back, we really got focused in on the Hispanic population and the Chin population in 2017. We were working on a application for What Works Community and trying to get part of this like national group of cities that were going to really use data as kind of the basis of, of making their decision points. And the focus we were using that data for at the beginning was really trying to figure out how to better engage with some of our underrepresented communities, and those communities based on data was our Hispanic population as well as our Chin population. We have seen more strides with regard to the Chin population, obviously winning awards at this point, but there's always work to be done, but we've made a lot of N roads there. The Hispanic population has not been as much. I mean, if I were to look at some of our statistics right now, 30% of our population is Hispanic, 5% of our board members. Now, this is obviously, people have to self, they have to select to identify themselves, but 5% of our board members are Hispanic. In 2023, our resident satisfaction survey, less than 10% were Hispanic. And just another example, we've collected some of our demographics on PEP applications, only 7% of our applicants have been Hispanic. So, there, it, there still seems to be an underrepresentation in that.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I'm assuming that this is not an ongoing contract, so once we figure out how to best engage with this particular demographic, we won't have a need to hire another contractor for next year and the year after and the year after. We'll, we'll learn from this. Is that the goal?
Yes, I'm really excited that this will, my, my hope is that we will, we've been trying to find methodologies to best engage this community, and our goal is not only to learn how, learn how, I do think it's going to be a lot of kind of guerrilla tactics of getting out and like meeting people and then connecting to other people, but also building a baseline of advocates in the community that we can then call upon to help us activate and get more engagement in the future.
Awesome, okay. And then I guess the last question I've got is that, speaking of baselines, what do we think the baseline is right now and what are we trying to get to? I realize that the agreement doesn't call anything out specifically, but that doesn't mean that I personally want to hold people accountable for a particular number.
I think, I think the, when we say baseline, right now, a, a good example is when we've done targeted, targeted engagement efforts with communities and so like, and then things we haven't done. So, in our 2023 resident survey, we had less than 10% of our, of our takers of that survey were Hispanic. But when we went out with our healthy infrastructure plan, we, we wanted to get closer to our population, that 30% makeup, and we got to 27%, but it was because we had Spanish-speaking employees that were going literally at sometimes door-to, door-to-door in some apartment complexes. The same thing with Business 121 Plan is 28% of our, of the people who engaged and gave us feedback were Hispanic. And so, my goal is to, to not only double our engagement, but also get to that 30% mark. I mean, that, that's where I'd like to be.
Awesome. And our Hispanic population makes up about 35, 40% of our population, right?
It's 30% right now.
30%, fantastic. So, we're trying to get it reflective of our population.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So, that's, that's my, that's the number that I'm going to keep in mind regardless of what's in the contract, so Fries and Nichols and, and Rio, Rio, that's the number that I would like to see hit. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Can I, can I add one more thing to that?
Yes, please.
With regard to targeted engagement, we are not just targeting the Hispanic population in, in Lewisville. We have, just like last time, and I know you weren't here when we did that engagement, but every single director is designated a certain subset of our community. It might be apartment, you know, folks who live in apartments. It might be our nonprofit community. It might be our HOAs. It might be our students. And each one of them, each one of those directors will be tasked with coming up with an engagement plan for that subset of the community. So, it is not just one group. We are planning to really go deep on many different groups in the community.
This group, we just feel like we need a little extra help to, to target. Is that right?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve a public professional services agreement with Fries and Nichols Inc. in the amount of $537,500 for development of the Lewisville 2035 Vision Plan and authorization for the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G9, consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget calendar, action priorities, and strategic focus areas. During the February 2025 Annual City Council Retreat, city staff presented a proposed calendar showing the important upcoming dates for city council meetings regarding the city's budget process. In addition, city council discussed the remaining incomplete action priorities from the Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan and identified 13 items to focus on for fiscal year 2025-26. Each year, staff brings these items to city council for formal approval during a regularly-scheduled city council meeting. The budget workshop is currently scheduled for August 9th, 2025, and is recommended that the city council approve the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget calendar, action priorities, and strategic focus areas as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, if there are any questions or comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget calendar, priorities and strategic focus.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H, reports. Reports about community items of interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Meredith, would you mind being first?
So, only report I've got, just a reminder of the serve Lewisville served in benefit this Saturday at Circle R Ranch. Hope to see everybody there. That's all I've got.
Counselmember Troyer?
Uh, no report.
All right, thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary? Richard?
No report.
Mayor, City Council, Park Fans, it's a big weekend at the Parks and Recreation Department. We've got the, the run out at Leela that starts early in the morning, 7:30, 8:00. We've got our spring clean where we partner with Keep Lewisville Beautiful. That is paired up with our Mariposas event out at Thrive Memorial Park, which will be happening midday. And so, we hope that you're able to join us at one of those. And if you can't join us this weekend, next weekend, we have a tree planting at Wayne Frady Park as our service Saturday event at 8 o'clock.
Thank you. No report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. While you're enjoying those wonderful parks events, you should know that the lake is 92.5% full.
All right. Yep. Steve?
Just real quick, I wanted to extend some thanks to, to Aaron and his team for going out there and really helping us track down these, these Republic issues that we've been having, not just in Lewisville, not just in councils, but in Lewisville in general. And it's top of mind right now because about a week ago, I called in a busted pipe to, to City Manager Powell over there, and it was probably 6:30, 7 o'clock at night, and I said, she said, we'll get Aaron to go take a look at it right now. I said, well, if he's already home, no, he's just around the corner from where you guys are. He was already out in the neighborhood, riding with Republic to try to get this stuff out of the ditch and then back onto tracks. I appreciate all the help that the entire department has been leaning in to make sure we get this straight across the city. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Jones?
A.
City Manager?
I just wanted to thank council that attended the Denton County Days. I felt like we were united front and trying to do our best to steer legislation in our favor, and we'll see if we were effective.
Absolutely, absolutely. I want to thank everyone who, who took the time. I know that's hard to do, so I really appreciate it. I also want to just take a quick moment. I have, I made a new commitment this year to, to really ramp up my reading because I've been a slacker, and I want to tell you, that has meant really relearning a lot of the tools at the library, and they are amazing. So, if you haven't had a chance to, to get a new purple library card, you need to go get one for our centennial. But the online e-readers, you know, if I can't get the book physical copy, which of course I'm old school, I like, I like that vanilla smell. That's, I love the old books. But if I can't get one that way, I've got them on digital. If I can't get them on digital, I've got interlibrary loan. I'm on my third interlibrary loan book right now. So, we're about 16 books into the year, so I'm really excited about that. But the library that we have is an amazing space in Lewisville, and there is no reason to not be able to find whatever you need. They will help you get it done. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and move us back into closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 072, deliberation, 073, deliberation about gifts, 074, personnel, and 076, deliberation. I got them all, and 078, economic development. They're all there. We're going into closed session.
I'm going to watch basketball.
All right, we're going to go back into regular session. Counsel, as there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned.